I'd like to call this meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. Welcome and good evening. Approval of the agenda, Robin?
I move, the approval of the agenda as presented with the H.R. addendum.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Correspondence. Correspondence to share. Okay, thank you. We're now at the recognition of the audience. Boy, I haven't had to do this for a while. We have one speaker tonight. Where's my little, is it still in here? No, it's not.
It's in there.
It's in my packet, sorry. It's been such a long time since we've had any. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address for the record. We would also ask that speakers refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully but is not obligated to respond to or debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of five minutes. And we have Kim Belgard.
I'm here tonight because after listening to the March 17th board debriefing, I was offended. I was FEA president for four years, and in all that time, I missed seven board meetings. My family suffered greatly while I was president. I worked long hours and took calls into the late hours every evening. It was during negotiations that I missed those last three meetings, but I was still there at least once each month. I had also just been hired as the new camp coordinator for Camp Cormrot and was getting ready for that season as well. FEA is not paid for all these extra work and the extra meetings. It is not a requirement that we attend board meetings. We are not paid $12,000 to serve on this board. I notice that there are times that board members miss meetings, and board members are elected and paid. I just think that if you have something to say or ask the FEA or its president, that you would please call and not call the organization out in a public forum. Thank you.
Kim? We are now at staff reports. FEA.
David?
Hello? Just to let you know, I'll be heading out right after my report to softball practice at Davies. I'm the Davies softball coach, so we're having practice tonight after that. So, in my, as I leave, Laura Christiansen will be here, and she'll fill in for me and be taking notes for us, so please welcome her as well. Just a few things that have been going on. We had Gene Week during the first week in March, which was money raised for scholarships. This year, we plan to give out up to four scholarships for $400 each to area highs, to the Fargo Public Schools graduates. So, we'll be looking to do that here in the next month, so we're excited to do that. Our delicate assembly for North Dakota United will be held this coming Saturday. It's the first one we've had as since we merged with the public employees, so it's an exciting time for us, and we're excited for that to happen. Something that FEA will be doing the month of April, we're looking to do a pay it forward to the community with sponsorship from North Dakota United and us. We'll be giving out money to the area charities and different, maybe needy families for where you see a need within their schools. Each school will submit an application of what their plan is, and we will give some money out to the community in helping to get our name out and just a little fundraiser and a little PR for us and to help outthick the community. So, I'm really looking forward to that also. A couple of issues. One thing that's most current is the sub shortage. I think we really need to look at all of us together. I know a lot of teachers are being pulled from special classrooms to help cover. I think this is one area we need to look into and hopefully get some kind of help by next year, because I know with more schools opening up and everything else around the state, it's going to be even more concerning in the future. So, that's one area. And I also have a letter to respond to the comments that were made at the last board meeting and the debriefing. So, I'll just read the statement I have, and then I'll be done. It was stated that FEA table has been empty over and over and over, and this is a pattern going back a year. As many of you may not know, the past president missed three meetings during the spring, and FEA has missed three of the 16 meetings since I took presidency. One due to parent-teacher conferences, one due to unexpected meeting that I needed to attend as president, and one because I had no one else able to attend at that time. It was stated, they, FEA, have a voice here at the table. FEA does not have a voice or a seat at the table to speak other than the couple of minutes to report what we are doing. One board member did say FEA could play a larger role in meeting the committee and committees, which FEA would be happy to partake if that is the board wishes. Having more of a voice and active participation with the board will help us to build a culture of excellence. FEA would encourage your attendance at the dome opener as another way to build a culture of excellence. This is an opportunity to talk, interact with the staff and teachers in one setting. It also shows the staff you care about them. Those of you who were in attendance this year would have heard me say how we all need to stand united. We also heard, we welcome them here, yet FEA is rarely acknowledged. I cannot recall more than an occasional high spoken to me in the seven months. It had been great to have been welcomed as a new president. An occasional thank you for coming, or we really value your input, and we are welcoming, and we have been welcoming. The only person who has talked to me in the length is Jim during the election and Dinah throughout various conversations. The two members that were changed in charge of the VS vote never once called FEA to talk over the three months of meetings, other than to make a comment during our first meeting how teachers don't vote and we need them at this time. To say we are welcome is not as accurate. The statement made, if the statements were made were true, I would have to wonder why no one called FEA with concerns prior to making a public statement. A phone call stating, I hope FEA is in attendance tonight as we will be talking about important issues, or that we would really like to hear from FEA, would have been welcomed. You say building a bridge and communication benefits us by sharing at the table, and we need that communication as a key for FEA and the board. I could not agree more, and we would welcome this wholeheartedly. If I or another representative were here, would you have asked us to comment? Would you have said, I'm glad to see you here tonight? In closing, FEA is willing and excited to move forward and onward and hope you are too. We look forward to you reporting accurate information so we can move forward in a building, in building relationships that unites us all, as we are all here for the same goal, to make Fargo Public Schools the best possible public school for our nearly 11,000 students. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, Chris? Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
I just would like to remind you that, first of all, there are nine of us here, and when one board member speaks, they don't necessarily speak for all of us. That happens in the media very often with our middle levy vote, and people will come out and say, "The board." And we are really nine distinct people that get elected for different reasons across the city, and so I would just like to say that many of us, including John, I would suggest, really value you and teachers. And I know you said you spoke to two people, and I know you and I had a conversation about the CRG when you first became the president. I know it was one conversation. And I also would like to add that I know for a fact that you have been dealing with a family health issue, and I'm glad to hear that your mom is cancer-free. And we all come to this room with lives outside of this room, and so I just would like to say, I certainly value your patience, so thank you.
Thank you, and as the board president, you know how I feel. So, I think we all appreciate the comments and interaction with the FEA. Having said that, our next item is AP 3430. You're going to enlighten us, Brock?
Madam President, members of the board, you have before you AP 3430, which is the policy that speaks specifically to admission and regulations of entering school facilities. The primary changes to this policy are consistent with the efforts that we have put in recently in regards to the buzzer systems. You've seen reporting of that. We visited with you about that as we were installing those. And so, the primary changes to this policy are really in the first three paragraphs of page one that specifically references the security measures taken at the elementary and middle schools regarding buzzer systems. We're still in the process of finalizing the middle school portion of that. And also, talking specifically about the expectations of checking at the security stations at the high schools as we, you're probably aware, this year, rather than having an outside entity, security personnel, we have brought that in-house and are hiring our own proctors and security individuals to be at our high schools, separate from our SROs. And so, it gives us an opportunity to continue to build in a culture and an environment where all of those are our employees that are interacting with our students and being a part of that. So, this is really an update for your information as to laying out the particulars of those security measures and the efforts that have been going on throughout the district.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Brock or comments? Okay, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Any other staff reports, Brock?
Nothing at this time.
Rachel? Bob?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Schott?
Yes, I just have one item I want to update you on, and that is our warehouse and the situation that we have with the ongoing process of the city looking to mitigate the flood issues in the downtown area. We all know that they're going to be building a flood wall that'll go down along the River Corridor, and part of that process is going to impede on our property and our area, and that's our warehouse. And so, they have ordered an appraisal of that. That's the first step in the process. And we asked a little bit more about the timeline this week because things were not happening, and found out that the appraisal has been ordered, and we will have a report by May 31st. That's the deadline for the report to be to the city. From that point, what happens is they will come to us, brief us on what that appraisal is, and then we get into the process of talking about what happens when they acquire the building, what are our options as we move forward to place our warehouse in another location, and all those things will become more clear once we get past that May 31st date. And so, that's what I have for you on that. We continue to work with an architect to give us an idea of what it might cost to move that warehouse facility, and once we have those things in place, we'll be coming back to you. So, that's a real quick update on what's happening with the warehouse. Not a whole lot to report to you, just that the timeline is May 31st, and after that, I think things will start to move forward with what our options will be and what we might be able to do.
Consent agenda. Robin?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda with the H.R. attachments.
Second? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. We'll move on to our business section. First item is the tabled motion from March 17th. In order to, for discussion to resume, a motion to take from the table must be made, seconded, and approved. Linda?
I move to take this item from the table for discussion and action.
Second? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? In that case, discussion. John?
Madam President, members of the board, the discussion in the community about where elections are held and whether or not they can be in public schools is a topic that I think is worth keeping on the radar of the community. I believe many of us sincerely believe, and members of the community believe, that there's a value to holding elections in public schools when and ever, whenever possible and whenever feasible. And it's not just a value for the voters, it's a value for the student population, where they go to school and they see "Vote Today" signs, they see public activity all day long of citizens doing their civic duty or performing their civic duty of voting at the polls. So, I, to keep that topic alive and to show a willingness on the district to the county and to the city and to the state, I am happy to, one more time, advance this motion and encourage all of us to have a dialogue about what it would take, what the benefits would be, and how we can go, get there so that we can get back to holding elections in as many school buildings as we can like it, like I believe many of us believe it should be.
Rick?
Just a discussion of the meeting when this came up. John, I'm all in favor of the intent of this motion. The only thing I have a little bit of an issue with is it says "Any Fargo Public School Building," and so perhaps trying to re-engineer that or reword that so it's appropriate Fargo Public School Building, because there are some buildings that just would not be appropriate or conducive from security issues and that type of thing to have the election in, and so it's just some consideration given to that.
Jim?
I have the same thought, Rick, and I would like to propose an amendment to strike the word "any" and insert "appropriate."
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. First, we have to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of changing "any" to "appropriate," please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Now, we are back to the new motion, Linda.
We had some discussion when this came up before the middle levy vote, and when the voting was taken out of the schools, it was, it was said that it was for the safety of students. Now, I understand that that was one school staff member at the time who's no longer here, and it was not brought before the full board for decision or discussion. But, to me, that question is still hanging out there, and I know that around the country, a lot of schools have certainly been going in the direction of not having elections in schools. That said, what does staff feel about opening the schools up on, you know, once a year, twice a year for elections? Do you need extra staff resources? Is it an inconvenience for the students? Is it a safety concern? You know, we just got done talking about what we do for safety in the schools, and now we're talking about using the schools during the school day for another activity. So, I'd just like to hear what the staff feels about this.
Dr. Schott?
Well, I appreciate the question. In this past vote that we had, we had a number of our schools that were used to facilitate that. We looked at the facilities, we looked at the entrance points, the parking areas. Where would the best access to the school be that would separate voters from students that are currently in class and using the facility? And really, it went off quite well. We did hire security for it, where we had two security people at each building that were hired, and so that did come at some cost to us. So, if we were to be involved in a general election or other elections where we use facilities, we'd have to take another review again of exactly what buildings would be the best buildings to do this in, and what kind of security measures would we want to set up in order to do that, to make sure that the public has access, but also our students are safe too. And so, from my perspective, if those things can all come together, then I would think that it would be just fine. But again, it's up to you as a board to decide if that's something that you desire in the schools, and so that's where I'm currently sitting with it. And of course, it's up to the county to want to do that. And so, I think what I'm hearing today is that if you think that's what we should do, that you would extend that opportunity to the county, and then it's up to them to decide if they want to do that.
Chris? Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, in that case, all those in favor of the Fargo School District inviting Cass County to conduct the June primary and the November general elections in appropriate Fargo Public School buildings, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you. Well, we will draft a letter with the appropriate information and pass that along. Thank you. Election of a Benefit Consultant. Brock, do you want to tell us about this?
Madam President, members of the board, you have the memo in front of you, 109, which is really the administration's recommendation from the work that has come forth from the Health Insurance Committee. And over the past year and a half or so, the Health Insurance Committee has been taking an in-depth look at not only health insurance, but really benefits as a whole within Fargo Public Schools. Much of that focus has been on health insurance because it's the largest expense to the district and to employees and covers the most number of people. But certainly, the Health Insurance Committee understands that benefits are much broader than just health insurance. Part of that discussion through that period of time has been talking to other schools near us and in the state that have used Benefits Consultant. We had, most notably, a meeting, the leadership of the Health Insurance Committee had a meeting with our counterparts in West Fargo, who are currently in a second year of a three-year contract with a Benefits Consultant, and tried to get a sense of what do they get for that service, and do they feel it's been worthwhile for them? That led us down the path of putting an RFP together. I shared this information with the Planning Committee a couple of months ago when we put the RFP out, so there was awareness that we were doing that. We were taking a look at, you know, if we were going to go in this route, what would that cost? So, we went through that process. And we had three companies submit proposals, and so we brought them in, we interviewed all three companies, and talked to them specifically about what we're looking for. And where the HIC falls on this is really wanting to bring in an independent third party that can take a look at all of our benefits and really conduct a full-scale benefits audit of the benefits of Fargo Public Schools, and take a look at not only helping us to determine, are we, do we have the right packages? Are we offering them at the right rates? How should that all fit together? But also, are there improvements that can be made and saving costs in doing so? Are there areas that we aren't doing what we need to be doing and can take a look at that? All three companies we interviewed had different services that they could provide, and certainly the interviews, I thought, went very well, and they were able to provide us with the types of answers I think that the Health Insurance Committee was looking for. At this time, then, the committee and administration is recommending that we would proceed with a one-year contract with a company called Gallagher Benefit Services, which is out of the Twin Cities area, and it would be $58,000 a year for that service, and we would enter into a one-year contract for them to come in and conduct a full-scale benefits audit and really work with us on the particulars of what we have in our benefits package and really moving forward. So, that's the gist of the recommendation, and I certainly would entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, Robin, then Paul and Chris?
I think it's wise to have our health insurance system audited, and they've worked so many years, I sat on it a handful of years ago, and both sides are really working hard to make it the best benefit package we can have for our employees at a reasonable cost. But due to the kind of perfect storm, if you will, of all the healthcare changes coming in and rising costs, I think that the, maybe, and I haven't been at the meetings, but through very good faith effort, we still have plateaued to a certain extent, and I think this will be the one piece that will help us move forward with both sides, I think, buying in and happy and feeling like it's thought of or thought through very well, so I will be supporting this motion.
Paul?
Thanks, Dinah. Just a question or two, Brock. First of all, do you have a timetable? When would these people begin, and when might we be able to get our hands on a report?
Members of the board, Paul, if this were to be approved, we would be reaching out to this company tomorrow morning, and we would be getting a contract prepared and getting them on board as soon as possible. One of the main drivers to that is our renewal for our health insurance is September 1st, so there's a lot of work to be done between now and then, just with that particular contract. But beyond that, certainly, we want it to be a broader look. So, we would get them on as soon as it was feasible, if the board approves this motion. And I would suspect that there would be a variety of reports that would come forward as we look at all the benefits packages, probably the first of which would be sometime before, maybe around the time we do preliminary budget approval, but certainly between preliminary and final as we prepare for the September 1st renewal of health insurance, and then continuing to expand the audit of those benefits from there.
We might have somewhat of a final report by the new year?
Members of the board, Paul, I think that's not unreasonable to expect. I think part of it will depend on how broad we go, and part of it is when renewals come up, and so there might be a pecking order that, and some might take more time than others, but that wouldn't be unreasonable.
And the second part is, you've told us what Gallagher Benefit Services was proposing, $58,000 for that six-month period. How about the others? What kind of costs were we seeing from them?
Members of the board, Paul, so Gallagher Services, there's this $58,000, and when I see, say there that that equates to $3.45 per employee, that's really per employee that's on the healthcare plan. However, that will not change, that $58,000 is a flat amount, and so if people come on the plan throughout the year or go down, that stays flat. The Hayes Group was, their cost was $3.60 per member, and that was a per-member charge. So, as there was flexibility in that, there was flexibility in the charge as well. Fremling and Associates, their approach was a little different. It wasn't based on anything specific charged to the district, to the members. It was based on a brokerage fee per line of service that is sold to the district and negotiated, and so there was, it was a commission base, based on the line of service that comes in. So, a different approach to it.
I need to follow up on it. Would it be correct to say that Hayes and Gallagher are not in the business of selling services?
Members of the board, Paul, I would say that that's not accurate. I would think that as you get deeper into the weeds of everything that's involved with their companies, they would have affiliates that could sell product. However, one of the safeguards that we would build into our contract that is similar to a district that we visited with is, we would agree to enter into a contract and have a provision in there that they are not able to receive a commission on any lines that are held with the district. And so, when we would put those out, we would put them out as commission-free awards, and Gallagher or affiliates would not be able to receive a commission from those lines of business.
And then, just to follow up on it, as, I think it was Robin, you just pointed out that you're going to be in favor of this particular approach, and I'm just going to say that I'm not going to be in favor of this particular approach for a couple of reasons. Having worked in the, in a Benefit Services area over the years and other areas where you bring in consultants, if they are actively in the business at all of recommending individuals or firms, if they have any relationship at all, there are an awful lot of ways that they get compensated other than receiving a direct commission. So, I worry about that. Number two, frankly, I worry about spending $58,000 with any firm that's going to come in and give us an evaluation and have it wrapped up within six months. Now, I know that it may go on longer than January 1st, but our needs are going to be that we need to get some answers perhaps by January 1st. You know, my opinion is, based upon what we spend when we hire a teacher or another staff member, you could literally hire someone full-time for the next six months for less than this amount. Now, you might say, well, they don't have the background to do that, and I would agree with that. They don't have the background to do it. But at what point do we establish what's a reasonable amount? And because these three firms each gave us an amount that happens to be similar, doesn't necessarily mean that's reasonable. So, all I'm saying is, I think $58,000 is too much to spend right now on benefit evaluation.
Chris?
Thank you. I have a question, Brock. My screen just went down.
Question?
Here we go. The question, yeah, I can't help you with that. It says that Gallagher has provided, works with 850 public school clients locally and nationwide. has provided, works with 850 public school clients locally and nationwide. I'm just wondering, they must have, or I'm hoping you have some information on, what the return on the investment of $58,000 is for us? How much do we hope to save over time?
Members of the board, Chris, we did do reference checks, and I did ask specifically for dollar amount savings, and none of the districts that I talked to gave us a specific, we saved X amount of dollars. I can tell you that in the reports I've gotten from West Fargo, they signed a three-year contract, and they saved more money in the first year than the cost of the three-year contract, and they've been very happy with the services they've gotten. I had another school district that shared with us that they saw approximately a 5% reduction in their overall benefit costs as a result of the work that they did with Gallagher. And the rest of them that we talked to, we talked to six different companies that really just said to us that, you know, they saw significant savings in their benefit plans, and they didn't give us a specific dollar amount to that. So all of that certainly indicates to me and makes me feel comfortable, and specifically with people that I certainly trust and respect, that did talk about the significant savings right away in recommendations and the work that Gallagher did with them. I feel very comfortable that there is a savings. I can't give you an exact amount in the grand total of all the benefits that we spend in the district. As you know, it's approximately $27 million in our budget of total benefit costs. If you then combine the benefit costs and the salary costs, that's a little over $100 million in our budget, and a portion of that certainly is the benefits piece. And so I think there is savings there, based on what I'm hearing from other clients they're doing business with. Second part of that is Gallagher, in the three companies that we worked with, had the largest portfolio of school districts within their book of business, which also made us feel very comfortable that they were the right company to move forward with in this regard.
Brock, based on our discussion and planning, my understanding is that the majority of the folks that make up the healthcare committee are, in fact, staff, teachers and staff, and that they're in favor of this. Because since I've been on the board in the last four years, it seems to me that the same discussion keeps happening, and they want a different approach, a different package, but they aren't exactly sure how to lay that out and choose. Am I right?
I would agree with that.
Rick?
Thank you. Brock, one of the other things that came up, just kind of a follow-up on Chris's comment, was that of the actual members of the insurance committee, it was unanimous? Is that correct? Just to lead in?
Of the voting members of the committee, yes. It was unanimous that they wanted to move forward in this regard.
That primarily staff of our district?
Correct.
Okay. Then, just to follow up maybe to Paul's comment, Aid Bailey uses Hays for our benefit analysis. We've got about 1,200 to 1,300 employees, and we've engaged Hays over many different, many years, actually. And I had a discussion with one of the partners who's directly involved with that committee and that group, who does the analysis with regard to that. And I asked him, and we're a bunch of accountants, you've got to understand, we do track numbers, but I didn't ask him the number, if this was worthwhile to engage a benefits consultant, to take a look at the benefits that you're offering, how they're structured, especially in the health insurance side, obviously, as Brock indicated, it's probably our biggest number. And his response, it's not quite a quote, but it's something like, it's a no-brainer. These companies have so much data and so much comparison and so much power behind their information systems of what's out there and available, that we continue to use them every year. And it's more of structuring your benefits, more so than trying to go and get bids on something, is what we've seen. And so I would suggest that the $58,000 that we're looking at spending is appropriate, and it's in the range of what Aid Bailey spends, again, with about 1,200 to 1,300 employees.
Robin?
And this is coming out of the Health Insurance Fund, so that's the money that's left over that could go to an HSA, but then the Health Insurance Committee is still saying they are in favor of this overwhelmingly, is what I'm hearing.
That's correct.
So, and that money's reserved for the health insurance. That's the only place it could go, the Health Insurance Fund.
I guess, members of the board, Robin, I would need some help from others who are more in tune with this than I. I'm looking at Jim. Predominantly, health insurance. It's broader, though, or benefits in general. Is that correct, Jim? You would have the best background on this.
Actually, we have a liability in our health plan for runoff claims, and that's part of the purpose of having what we conveniently call a Health Insurance Fund balance. I believe technically, the Health Insurance Fund balance is just like any other general fund dollar that's in a fund balance, and could be used for any purposes the district sees fit. But keep in mind, we have the liability because we self-insure. So if we took those dollars and did something else with them, we may have to replenish those dollars with general fund dollars. So we treat it as a separate fund, but it truly is not a statutorily separate fund.
But in the spirit of the dollars that were put there, it seems most sincere for me to target those dollars towards health insurance costs and analysis, at least from this board member's perspective.
Paul?
Thanks, Dana. And just to lay some further background, my comments were not so much against using a consultant. They were that I just felt the figures were somewhat high, given the timetable that we're working under. And it's a pattern that I sometimes do bring up, when we're going to get something done in four months, but we're going to pay a year's salary to get it done, or whatever. And, you know, perhaps it is competitive. It just seems to me that at this time, in this place, given our current circumstances, that that's a bigger number than I would like to see. And secondly, Brock, I want to bring up something because I am concerned that it may make news later on. When we talk about $27 million worth of total benefit package, we are including a certain amount of mandated benefits. Is that not correct?
That is correct. That would be all-inclusive benefits of the district that are provided to our employees.
Some of those, for example, are recently escalated numbers that the state of North Dakota is requiring us to contribute to PERS and so on.
That is correct.
Any other discussion? Anybody willing to make a motion? Jim?
Yeah. I move that we authorize the administration to enter into a one-year consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services for benefit consulting services as identified in memo 109.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion?
President Goldberg, who seconded? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Robin. No further discussion? Maybe we'll take a roll call vote on this, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Papacek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Wallman?
Yes.
Boyd? Oops, sorry.
Sorry, she had to step up.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Goldberg?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Brock. I appreciate, you know, when you have information to share that you do. I wanted to clarify also that I, this may be a one-year salary, but you didn't commit to the fact that all the work would be done within six months. It may take longer, and we're getting a lot of services for that timeframe. So, thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent contract. Rusty?
The committee met, Linda, Rick, and myself met with Dr. Schatz on April 2nd. You have the contract attached to this, and I'll basically just highlight just the two areas that we changed, and we will recommend approval of this. Just in the first section, employment and term, we're keeping in a rolling two-year contract, so we just changed the dates from 2013 and '15 to 2014 and '16. And in the second section, under compensation, we are recommending a 2.8 increase, percent increase for the year. So with that, we recommend approval, and personally, I want to thank Dr. Schatz for his outstanding year of leadership to the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call on this one, too, please. Ann Marie?
Papacek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Goldberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're pleased to have you continuing on board. Next, policy monitoring. Monitoring of EL 5, staff compensation, and EL 6, staff evaluation. They were responded to by eight board members, and all, I believe, in compliance. I would entertain a motion. Rick?
I'll make a motion to accept the evaluations of EL 5 and EL 6.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional comment or discussion? All those in favor of accepting these as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Passes. And now, bond sale approval. And I see Myron is here. So Brock, do you want to?
Madam President, members of the board, as you're aware, we, through the Planning Committee and discussions previously at the board, we're in the process of awarding bond sales or having them out for bid today, and that happened earlier today. And I think actually, Rick is going to carry the first portion of this memo, and Myron is here from PFM, to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Excellent. Thank you. There's quite a stack of papers that I think we each, we all have, and as most of you recall, we had a previous authorization, a resolution authorizing, i.e., a bond sale. And this really is the follow-up resolution required to, once the bond sale amounts are fixed and the rates are fixed, that the board again needs to approve the resolution for the bond sale. This resolution calls for $26,970,000 of limited tax bonds, Series 2014. I think we're all aware of the fact that the purpose of the bonds is to pay for the Ed Clapp Elementary School construction and the HVAC projects as well. On page one of the resolution, where it starts off as be it resolved, it talks to, on 101, talks to the amount of the issuance of $26,970,000. One piece, also on 1.02, on the bottom of page one of the resolution, we talked quite a bit at length at planning with regard to how the bonds will be structured, with regard to a call date, enabling us to call these bonds if, in fact, the state-funded construction funds become available to the Fargo School District. And actually, that's on the bottom of page two, under the optional redemption. And these bonds are structured with a five-year call date, enabling us to call the bonds at that point in time, and providing an opportunity to save approximately $4.5 million, I believe, and that ranges the estimate, if we're able to call these bonds and access the North Dakota construction funds. The rates on the bonds, they're a little bit further back in your document. When Myron met with planning, he estimated the net, the true interest cost of the bonds to be approximately 3.65%, and it actually came in at about 3.64%. With Bank of America Merrill Lynch was the low bid on those bonds. And there's a lot of pages. There is a separate section with the, I think, Brock, you did send that out, correct?
I believe so.
It is posted on the late editions section.
There's a, there's a documents that look like this, results of sale.
At least it wasn't in the three late editions that I had opened up, so.
Okay. There were, I'll walk you through it. The net, the true interest cost ended up 3.6417%, and that was the bid, the low bid was Bank of America Merrill Lynch. There were five bids that were received for the sale of these bonds. That was the lowest one, Robert Baird and Company, was at 3.7%. Raymond James came in at about 3.8%. Hutchinson, Shockey, and Early came in at 3.82%, and JP Morgan came in at 3.98%. So the five bids, the Bank of America Merrill Lynch was the lowest at 3.64%.
Can I ask just a quick question about that? I don't have that form in front of me either. Is the 3.64 the average cost of the indebtedness over their life?
That would, I will make it easy, yes. That would be the true interest cost of the issuance, if, in fact, they are not early redeemed.
And by the way, speaking of the early redemption or the call, I think, I don't know if Jim's looking for that, too, but I was looking for where it talks about the product can be called at a certain time.
Page two of the resolution, lower, the bottom of page two, optional redemption.
Are you looking at the second resolution, Rick? There's two resolutions.
I'm looking at the resolution authorizing and establishing the term in limiting tax bond Series 2014, creating a sinking fund, transfer and pledging taxes for their payment.
The thicker piece of the two documents.
The resolution actually issuing the bonds, not the resolution for the, allowing us to go into the North Dakota Construction Fund.
Okay, so what I'm looking for, optional redemption.
Page two.
Okay, I found that particular version of page two. You mean A dash two?
No, it's right at the bottom of page two.
How soon can the products be called?
They have a, they have a five-year call date. If, in fact, the construction funds are, the North Dakota construction funds become available sooner than that, we can do an early redemption with a crossover refunding, actually. And so you end up benefiting from the lower interest rate on the construction fund, but carrying the debt outstanding on the revenue bonds until the call date. So you do benefit from the lower, the lower rate.
And we don't have to worry about the arbitrage that would be there between?
That would be, Myron might want to step up, but the arbitrage would all be figured in at the point of time of the, of the crossover refunding, Paul, so that would be taken care of. So, yeah, I mean, part of that refunding is the arbitrage calculations, and make sure you don't get in arbitrage trouble.
And we would be permitted theoretically, under state regulation, if they make those funds available to do this kind of a program, even though we won't be retiring that debt immediately?
Right. We had Mr. Aronson available as well, the bond counsel, at the planning meeting, who basically indicated that we could do this.
Did you want, oh, okay. We need to do this in two parts, two different motions. Rick, are you wanting to?
I'm not going to, I don't intend to read a nine-page resolution.
No, 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 no. I was thinking you would read the words under recommendation in our memo.
And that I don't have in front of me, so if someone else would like to read that.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah. I'll move that we adopt the resolution providing for participation in the school bond credit enhancement program.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion to this point? Okay, we need to have a roll-
Second? Was that seconded?
It was seconded, yeah, by Chris. We need to have a roll call vote on this, so Ann Marie?
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Papacek?
Yes.
Goldberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, and now we need to move on to part two. Jim?
Now that I know what the bids were, I'm going to move to accept the low bid for $26,925,000 of limited tax bonds and adopt the resolution authorizing and establishing the terms of the limited tax bonds, creating a sinking fund, therefore, and pledging taxes for their payment.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we will also have a roll call for this, please. Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Papacek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Goldberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Can I have a question, though, please?
Yes.
Jim, the motion for the bond issuance was for how much? I've got a question. Should the motion not be for the par value of the bonds? And I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Myron that. Should the motion for the resolution be for the par value of the bonds? Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Good evening, board members. Myron Knutson again with Public Financial Management. Just wanted to mention too, I'm here with Arcilia Dieter from her office. And Arcilia and I have worked together for about 12 years. Arcilia does all the work behind the scenes. You may see her at future meetings once in a while, so I just kinda wanted to introduce her a little bit. But to answer your question on the resolution, yes, it should read $26,970,000. As the bond issue size was adjusted based on the bids we received today to net the school district $26.6 million for project cost.
So, question. Since we've passed a resolution, can we track that and put it in the appropriate resolution amount? Don't know the rules on that.
Okay.
Well, the usual, the usual pattern would be if any measure that we've enacted has created expenditure on the part of anyone else, we have difficulty retracting it. But this has not created any expenditure. But I do have a question about the difference between the $2 amounts.
Certainly.
That's appropriate now, otherwise we'll wait until we resolve this one.
John, while she's looking into it, go ahead.
Madam President, my estimation, guess is that, my best guess is that we would move to reconsider and then amend the new motion as it's considered for a second vote.
I'll buy that.
We'll just give Anne Marie a second to, since I'm not an expert on this either, to try and help us. Do you want to clarify the?
$26,900, I can talk to the difference.
Yeah, talk to the.
Paul, the, the difference in, in how it would be put together was basically the original issue discount on the bonds. And I believe the net, Myron, would also include the cost of issuance would be subtracted from the bond sale as well.
Correct.
I guess in terms of true transparency, what is the cost of issuance?
Cost of issuance is included in the sources and uses numbers. And I don't know if you have a copy of those, but I can run through them real quick here again. The cost of issuance are $96,000. The underwriters discount, which is the compensation that goes to the winning bidder, is $212,482. But again, that underwriters discount, that's included in the true interest rate. So when you're talking about the rate of 3.64%, the bond discount's already included in that rate.
As is the original issue discount is included in there as well, net cost. So all the costs are included in the, in the rates that we.
Well, not all the costs. The cost of issuance aren't included in that 3.64%, but the bond discount is, yes.
Okay, we've determined that we can move to reconsider, since we just made this motion. So in that case, could I have a, someone motion to re, move to reconsider the motion we just adopted?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So how we could make an amendment, bless you, to the original? Make a brand new. But we have to vote to reconsider.
You need to vote.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of? Is there any discussion about the vote to reconsider?
Myron, I just wanted to double check. Is the, is the?
Bless you.
Is the amount that is going to the underwriting firm, it looks to me to be doing some really quick math here, about eight tenths of one percent?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's reasonable compensation for an issue of this size and type?
Okay.
And from, maybe I should just add one additional thing. From the school board's perspective, you want the lowest total cost of the bidder. And their cost represents the total amount of interest plus any discount or compensation they're making. And what you want is the lowest total. And the lowest total was submitted by Bank of America Merrill Lynch.
Yeah. Mike, yeah.
Okay.
So all those in, in favor of reconsidering the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Fine. So now we will reconsider the original motion in order to adjust the dollar amount to be correct, Rick. Or whoever.
Does that take an amendment then? Just like to make, propose an amendment then to the original motion? The amendment really relates to the amount of the bonds, the proposed amount, $26,970,000.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion required? Rusty. Okay, all those in favor of amending the original motion by changing the dollar amount from $26,925,000 to $26,970,000, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Any further discussion about the motion as amended? I think we better do a roll call on this one because Anne Marie needs that for the records. All those in favor of the amended motion for the $26,970,000? And Anne Marie will do the roll call.
Wallman. Johnson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Pachek.
Yes.
Steen.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Goldenberg.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for catching that, whoever caught that I missed. And sorry for the confusion there, but we get, we get better every time we have a new situation here. But I appreciate your patience. Thank you, Myron. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for introducing your colleague.
Yes, thank you, board.
Thank you for taking the time to be here. Rick?
And just also thank you, Myron, for all your work regarding the structuring of this and trying to get us through where we needed to be as far as the timing, how it's gonna fit within the building fund, and also how it hopefully fit within the North Dakota school construction funding as well. So thank you for that.
We are now at our board reports section. This is also the time where we would normally have a quick break. Do people want to have a break? Or, yeah, I'm seeing yes. Okay. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break and we'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you. Rusty?
I did share a little bit about my visit at South shortly after, but great day, you know, very interesting day. It was a half a day. Went to KELC first, so I was kinda lost after that. But I mean, Mr. Smeds did a great job just engaging with the students in KELC. Went to an English class, ROTC course, and then ended in auto mech with learning about brakes. And there again, I ended the day lost too, because I don't know much about that. But I, I just think it's nice to do that, get out of the boardroom, just actually see what's happening in the classroom. My takeaway, one of them is that our glass paper project is really working. You know, I purposely just asked the question in all the classes and, you know, the amount of money that we're putting towards that, it's nice to see that instructors are using it very well, students are liking that, and it's only gonna get better.
Robin, do you want me to share first, or you?
Sure, go ahead. Well, I, I was fortunate enough to be able to do two schools, so I had very different experiences at both because they were set up slightly differently. At one school, I shadowed only one student. At the other, they had me divided up and I got to meet two or three different students. So, and I had very different classes in both places. I got to see the glass paper project in, in use. I got to see some of the literary workshops happening, real variety of, of things. And I think that as board members, we need to really get a sense of what's going on in the schools. And, you know, we make all these decisions in the boardroom. And then, to Rusty's point, we never go, we're never able to really see them in action. And, and I thought it was a really great learning experience. With one of my students, I had, like Jim, a little more opportunity to get to know them a little better just because of the way the day was structured. I also had the opportunity to talk to a lot of the teachers just because of the way my day went, especially at North, who were also really interested in giving me some of that feedback, you know, that Paul's talking about. It wasn't just that I was observing, but they had an opportunity to talk to me. And, you know, we have some amazing teachers who are very creative and exciting. And I sort of wish that I could go back to school and not be that old-fashioned, sit there and the teacher in front of the blackboard and not a whole lot of imagination. So I think even though teaching is by, by no means an easy profession, we are, have some amazing staff in our district. And I found them to be excellent days. And my two cents is I would love to do this again, give board members an opportunity to go to a different school that they didn't do this time. It takes a lot of time on a board, board time, so it's a commitment. I also think going forward, for new board members, it's a great way to sort of shock them and give them a little bit of a climatize into the schools. But I'm also in favor of trying something else different too, that might be more of a group thing again, so. But I thought it was a really good experience.
And I went to Davies for a half a day, and I was paired with an ELL student. And I learned a lot about the ELL. And I'm with kids of lots of different cultures already in my, in my workplace. But how their day is structured was very striking to me and how they were kind of in certain pods and then mainstreamed elsewhere. But I was in a science class and yes, I was lost the whole time too. But I, so I was gonna sit down and do some of the problem solving, and she had them in groups. And what really struck me was the kids wanting to learn. They were coming to me as the only other adult in the room, asking me for help. And they, I shouldn't have known the answer. And I didn't. I was working through it. But I, and I bumbled away through it. But the eagerness that this group had to learn in every classroom that, that we were in was quite evident. And sometimes I think that, that other parts of the community might look past that. And these kids are wanting to succeed and wanting to learn. There was a lot of projects that they were working on, a lot of group work. I, I was just very impressed with the whole program. And then there was a program too where they were working on their, their reading and comprehension skills. And they were working on a computer, and then it would give them feedback, kinda, kinda like what you would describe as a map program. But they can only progress through certain units. And it was, was fabulous. So I was really impressed with what we're doing with our ELL kids. And I, I really liked the format. I got more out of it personally, maybe, partnering one-on-one and learning about our education system. But I liked it. It keeps it real and it keeps us in the boardroom. So with that, as far as the feedback goes, I made notes. But if you can think of anything else by Thursday, when we meet at 11:30, please let one of us on the communications committee know. And we'll try to come up with a plan for next year with the help of administration and see what we can come up with. But thank you for participating, I think.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other last minute comments on that before we move on? Well, as you know, six of us attended the National School Boards Conference in New Orleans. So we divided it up, so we would have three and three. So Paul, you're up first.
I have some materials to hand out. That. Implement some of these items. One of the presentations I went to, spent a great deal of time, John, were you at that one with Lanell Burmark? Were you at that one with me? Yeah. She spent a fair amount of time saying, gee, if you hand something out, don't feel you need to read it word for word. Because we all know we can read this. So I won't read this word for word, but I will try to stick to some of the high points. I visited with a group called the STEM Academy, and I have a brochure to leave, perhaps with Dr. Bob, possible third-party review of our STEM efforts within the district and some other professional development. Took a similar opportunity to meet with some people from the Congressional Medal of Honor Foundation. And what a fascinating curriculum that they proposed. It's all free. And they managed to give me a few, well, I took them, basically, some things that I'll also leave with you that might be helpful. There was an interesting program that I, or a little booth, and they had a little session going on there called Champions. And it was with regard to after-school programs. And it reminded me of how important I think after-school programs are, particularly when we can find ways to utilize our curriculum to be the basis for those. In other words, I think the, the non-curriculum-based after-school is great, but how great is it if we can find things that are gonna support our curriculum as well? That's what they do. I took one look at them and thought, well, I don't know that we really wanna hire these people to come in and do our stuff. But I like the idea of finding, you know, of literally brainstorming among our staff. And perhaps they already do this, and we're just not aware of it, but brainstorming among our staff to see if there are other curriculum-based after-school activities that we could support. The one that came to my mind is the, is the creative dramatics program that we used to do. That, you know, my only way of describing it is it was so popular, we had to discontinue it, which seems a shame. But perhaps the Trollewood people, I know we've talked to them about trying to do more of that. And I don't need an answer on it. I just wanna bring it up and hope that perhaps we can get back to doing some of that creative dramatics in the elementary schools. Because like I said, it seemed to be so popular that we couldn't meet the demand, and so it was discontinued. Number four and number five, two people who I've brought up in past years, and maybe that's why I put them down on paper this time, so that it might get a little more legitimate review. Lanell, I think both of them would be excellent to bring in here for professional development. We get all kinds of feedback about the professional development. And I think most of the people who went to the, I'm sure many of you went to the Jim Spellos one from time to time, if not at this particular session, at previous ones. He always gets rave reviews and he does a great job. And I asked him if he would come to Fargo. And he said, would you pay me? No, he didn't say that. But I'm sure he would come to Fargo. And the same thing with Lanell Burmark. She does, she's an excellent resource to bring in for PD, it seems to me. If we're all about engagement, that's what she's all about. And she does a good job of it. I think you'd agree, wouldn't you, John? So I'm just here to recommend that I would love to see those two next year on our, on our PD schedule. I think it'd be great. The one that I, I didn't put down, I don't know why, but I didn't mention number six. And that is, there was a company there, and I can't remember who they were, but they were a session that seems to me Robin was at, the one about building trust, one conversation at a time. I listened to what they had to say. They basically, I believe, are a company that has a product to sell. And that is, they, they will come into your district and help you resolve problems or communication issues with the public or anything like that. And they have a program that they do. And I'm not so sure we would wanna necessarily hire them to do what they do. But I did like their suggestion for a positive interaction site that's kind of one step above our, our public warehouse program that we have. And they also are pretty big promoters of a, of a very positive proactive survey feedback program that I think we could utilize with our district to help give us feedback, to direct us on issues from Millevy votes to curriculum, to calendars, to you name it. And so I'd be happy to share that with Dr. Schatz during one of our meetings sometime coming up. But those are the things I saw. And I, I have various junk to give you guys, because I got it.
Thank you. Jim?
Three quick ones to share, that unfortunately I don't really have handouts because they've tried to go digital. And I didn't have an iPad to bring with me. But I've reached out to all three, and I will be getting materials and pass them along to the administration. The first one that really fascinated me came out of Clarksville Montgomery County School System. It's a very centrally located district, I believe, in Tennessee, much larger than we are, but spread out. It's a county-wide school system. And they have been in the STEM world for quite a while. But they stumbled upon something that I think just would be a natural fit for our district. And not that we would wanna create a STEM academy or anything like that. But they partnered up with the Extension Service through the University of Tennessee. And of course, we have one right up at India. of Tennessee, and of course, we have one right up at ISU, and really have developed project-based learning in the ag sector and ag sciences in particular, plant sciences, animal sciences, some engineering. And of course, that just saying to me as I thought about where we're located and the number of ag businesses that theoretically we could engage in, from seed companies to Titan Machineries, to crystal sugars, to the farmer in the field. So I have reached out actually to their superintendent. He got back today and he had a board meeting. So he said, can we talk tomorrow? And I said, well, I got a board meeting too, so we can talk tomorrow. And I'm going to just try to find from him who the contact person would be, maybe if our staff wants to at least visit with them. They didn't give statistical data, but they have a number of at-risk students. And what anecdotally they shared was the high number of at-risk students that just got engaged when they integrated this ag component into STEM. And now they've got kids that might have been dropouts or certainly were planning on graduating and getting a job wherever they could, that are now talking about going into plant sciences or becoming vets. Because they actually went out and experienced doing artificial insemination to a cow, which I'm sure would have been a great video to watch kids doing that. But anyway, I thought that was a very interesting program that might have some practical application as, as we look at project-based learning. And they've gotten a lot of support from the ag businesses in their region to fund for teacher development. And they call them externships, where teachers literally get involved for several weeks of the summer and get paid through these ag grants, ag business grants, to really immerse themselves in the science. Anecdotally, I'll just give you one little part of what they kind of talked about in their system. And this was really more from a perspective of their ag economy. Tobacco is a big industry down there along with cattle and, and row crop grains. Some type of tobacco to cure takes hardwood sawdust. And they're literally running out of hardwood in like an eight-county area because tobacco is a very old industry. And so they gave the challenge to their kids, in this, this particular learning group of kids, to what can we do in our little footprint of Tennessee to help address meeting the world's need for food in 2050? So the kids embarked to find, was there a way that they could cure this tobacco without having to chop down the hardwood trees? Because that has other environmental aspects that are negative. They came to the conclusion they couldn't because the hardwood trees are what makes the tobacco valuable. But it was an interesting little equation for them. And they took an ethical twist on it as well. As you look at tobacco, the negatives of it in today's world, and you look at their community, which is a tobacco economy. So it really encompassed it a lot more than just science and math at the end of the day. They looked at the history of their region. They looked at the global population. They looked at the ethics of the industries that are in their community. The second one probably wasn't as much fun, but I always try to get to these things that might help us from a legal frontier. And there is a large law firm by the name of Hogan and Lovell. They're worldwide. But they have a division that specializes in OCR issues, Office of Civil Rights issues. And pretty fascinating as they were going through the current thrusts of the OCR department and what districts should be doing or shouldn't be doing and preparation for what they think the next wave of examination by the OCR is going to be in public education. And we probably already do this, but one of the big things they're alerting everybody to, based upon a, I think it came out late last year from the OCR, is to start tracking referrals to the office when a classroom teacher sends a student to the principal's office for whatever reasons. And what the OCR is apparently looking for is, is there discrimination against protected classes in referrals to a principal's office? They don't even care what caused you to get referred. They don't care what the outcome of the referral was. They're looking at raw data. And they have an expectation that districts will start tracking this data so they can examine it, so they can, you know, hopefully make sure the subjective nature of that call, because it is subjective. A teacher might be having a bad day and this student just was off the chart too much today and gets sent to the office. But they're concerned that because that's subjective rather than objective, that we might be having protected classes that might be getting discriminated against. So I thought that was pretty interesting. For board members, and I'm sure the admin team already knows this, there's something called the CRDC data, which is the Civil Rights Data Collection Process, that all school districts in the nation have to participate in. And it is a public document. You can go out, I did it today, and I went in to the Office of Civil Rights and pulled up Fargo's data. Like all data that's collected about us, from us, it's not always accurate. You'll be happy to know, Brock, I think I saw that your non-personnel expenditures at North High were $774 million in 2011. So if you're looking to shave a little bit in the budget, go look at what they're doing up at North with the heat bill. So there are obviously some data reporting things that are not correct. But it breaks it out by building in our district as well as at a district level. And I think if you look at that, we can feel pretty good. That is a general rule when it comes to the, the ramification issues of suspensions, expulsions, we are probably as, as close as you're going to get to, you know, I don't know if this sounds good or bad, but we don't have any real over-representation of any subgroup ending up with suspensions, for instance, where that is not the case nationwide. So I think that's a strong accolade to not only the professional development our administrative team has been getting, but their execution of the game plan as well. But pretty fascinating data that you as a board member might want to go look at at some point in time. The last thing that I'll share tonight came from the Kentucky Association of School Board and its topic was titled, 10 Practices to Avoid Liability. So I thought that'd be a good one to get to. And I didn't really learn anything new there that I don't think we already are well ahead of the curve on. But there was one thing, it wasn't really related to their presentation, but they were from Connecticut, so they kind of diverged into it. And it was a discussion about what they've learned from Sandy Hook and what school districts could maybe learn from the experience that the community of Sandy Hook has received. One of the things they really recommended is for school districts to look at their policies regarding donations. And we have one. And they said, to put this into perspective, the Sandy Hook School District now has rented three warehouses to store the stuff that's been donated to them. It is a community of 28,000 people that has over 40,000 teddy bears in storage right now. And they're not really sure what to do with them. They've got parkas to outfit a third world country. And of course, every disaster or tragedy is different. You know, if a hurricane wipes out your city, things like clothing and bedding is pretty critical. If absolutely insane person goes in with an automatic firearm and shoots some students, people didn't lose jackets. It was actually a much greater loss, human life. So they really recommended, look at what your donation policies have for incoming in case your district is ever on the national or world stage with a tragedy. And so I thought that was kind of interesting. So those were the three that at least I'll share tonight. And as I get material in that I've requested, I'll certainly get along to Jeff and the rest of the team.
Thank you, Jim. So now I'm number three. I went to a sort of a diverse group of things. One was entitled, Why Engaging the Public is Imperative. National School Boards Association has created a toolkit on helping districts with their public engagement and communication. And they shared that toolkit on a flash drive with all of us in attendance. So I have passed that along to Ann Marie to share with her communications group to see if there's anything in that that either we aren't doing or that might give them some ideas and perhaps then share with the communication committee. Because they didn't actually present the toolkit itself to us. They were more, you know, talking about the engagement itself. So that might bring some interesting things. Several of the other presentations had a common theme that I thought was kind of interesting, unintentionally, because I didn't pick it thinking that. There's a lot of push out there, which we've all heard before, that we seem to spend an awful lot of time assessing and evaluating our kids and that we need to get away from that and that we should be assessing them on things that they have control over and giving them feedback on things that they have control over. So when you start to think about that, what does that mean? And I think that's kind of an interesting concept. I went to a presentation that ultimately was about encouraging community service and volunteerism amongst students and, and how to do that and how to empower students. And obviously, we have some amazing projects like Fill the Dome and other things that are going on in our school district. They did this, and I'm not recommending this specifically for our school district, in a 6,000-student school district, K through 12, they shut down regular classes for two days and brought all the kids, K through 12, to the high school and did this, the presentation first in the auditorium for all the kids. And then basically it was, if you could solve all the world's problems, how would you do it? Or what, how would you solve the world's problems? And then they broke the kids up into groups based on whether they were interested in environmental issues or civil rights or whatever the topic might be. And they would brainstorm about what some of the problems were and how they would do it. And this was across the board, age groups. And I'm not recommending that specifically for our school district because I think we do things that lead to that. But it was an interesting concept, I thought, to try at an elementary level because we don't have all of our buildings. The champions between volunteerism and community service, especially at the elementary level, need to be started by a teacher who's enthusiastic. And so I think there's more enthusiasm in some schools than others. And this was just a sort of interesting way to get young kids. And she shared many anecdotal stories of amazing ideas that kids did have and actual things that they could carry out. And after those two days, those groups stayed together and had an action plan and, and went out and did stuff and created websites and, and created interest. And in some cases, they were doing small things within their community or their school community that were effective. But I think that we all understand across the board, and it's become an important piece within our own schools, is the volunteerism and giving back to community and, and giving that whole thing to kids. So it was just a different aspect of doing that.
Hey, Diana, before you leave that, just a question for you. And this, I've said all tied in together, but you know, you kind of introduced it all, assess kids and what they have control over. And then it went on to this other piece. And I'm just curious how that all, in my mind, I'm going, how does that tie into Common Core standards? You know, we got all these assessments, but let's assess kids over what they have control over. Yet we have Common Core. And I'm wondering how they reconciled.
Well, the presentations that I went to were not reconciling that. They were the folks on the other side of the coin, perhaps, that were saying that we're, instead of increasing the testing, I didn't go to a presentation that actually said we shouldn't have Common Core. I didn't, none of the presentations were saying that. In fact, that wasn't even part of the, it was just this general idea that we were assessing kids too much and constantly and not letting them learn in all sorts of other areas. And then proposing ways in which we could inspire kids to learn out of the box and still be equally successful and learn skills that, that we all think are important, but in a different way. So I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that it was by coincidence, the message that I heard in, in several of my sessions. And then I also went to one that was about cyberbullying and suicide and the connection and that there's a lot more of that happening in schools. And the results of, you know, fortunately, we've not experienced this here, but you know, a school shooter or incidents of that sort and how the connection starts low and how that builds up and the role of schools in sort of the educational piece with that. So was another interesting piece that I think we're already doing a lot of that education stuff and interventions about bullying and trying to create a good school climate and stuff. And sometimes it's important to go to these things, even though you think from the description of the session, you're going to learn something new. And in fact, you go and feel good about what we're already doing in our school district. So that was for today, what I share. Next time, we'll hear from Rob and Linda and John. So you guys get the lucky, you can prepare now for two weeks. And now we are at committee and liaison reports. So Robin, do you want to start?
As I had mentioned earlier, communications will be meeting on Thursday at 11:30. If you'd like to join us, 11:30 to 1:00.
Paul? Rick?
Our planning met and we covered, pretty much spent most of the time with my run last planning meeting and covered all of the financing options. And by the way, I did compliment my run on the way out. He did, I think, an excellent job for us as far as that structure and put it all together. So just like to make sure you know that. And then we covered some really, really preliminary information on the budget. And we're, we're heading with that. And Brock has got a little bit of work ahead of him yet on, on getting that back to the board. So we'll be having probably some additional planning meetings beyond what was originally scheduled. And we haven't scheduled those yet, but we'll work together and try to get those done.
Rusty? John?
Madam President, members of the board, I, the HIC Committee had quite a long, lengthy dig-in session. And that led, of course, to the planning, working through their proposal and, and board action tonight. So you already pretty much are aware of what happened there.
Jim?
Couple of reports, but I first have to pass along a warning to Jeff. I ran into, I'll get their name wrong. It's the National Association of Activity Directors at the national meeting, who saw my name badge and immediately started talking to me about Todd. So I just alert you, there, there's some recruiting in their mind going on there. So our activities director is known nationally, apparently, in very, very positive light. And you might want to pass that along to him, or maybe you hold it to yourself.
It's on the TV now, Jim.
Pardon?
It's on the TV.
Well, yeah. But I, I mean, it speaks volumes of the gentleman you've brought in to lead that end of our district. So GAC will be meeting next Wednesday. We're going to try and hone down and at least from our perspective, make sure when we bring to the board possible recommendations for legislative focus in anticipation of possible resolutions to the state association and also gearing up for the legislative session. We're going to try and get that polished up so it can come back to the board, probably in the next one or two meetings of the board. SEEK has a governing board meeting tomorrow. We are going to be looking at a proposal from a consulting firm to analyze their options and operating going forward from, moving from us being their fiscal agent to them taking on that role themselves. And that has a lot of ramifications for SEEK, right down to health insurance and how paychecks get cut. So that'll be kind of an interesting discussion, I'm sure, tomorrow night at the SEEK. So that'll be kind of an interesting discussion, I'm sure, tomorrow night at the SEEK board. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. President's report. You can see the, a list of several things that I've done in the last couple of weeks, some of which I've been joined by others. The holiday open house isn't very descriptive, but I can't remember, but you all probably got an invitation about it, but Ben Franklin Students had this thing where they had to create a holiday. There was actually a picture in one of the school talk recent things, and I attended that, and that was really lots of fun, to see the creative ideas of the kinds of holidays. If only we actually had some of the holidays they thought of, we'd all be really enjoying ourselves. I'm following up, I think I told you, I went to this first part of this rethink Mental Health for Fargo. It's actually a very interesting group, and I think, at the end of the day, when they come up with suggestions for going forward for services and things, that there'll be things that we can implement in the schools, or take advantage of, or be aware of, that will help some of our students. The candidate information session, I should give you a heads-up about that. Robin and I chaired it, and Rick and Chris were also there. We had eight folks come out, and they asked good questions, and there was personal feedback, we gave them a lot of information. And I definitely think that going forward, having it prior to the filing date is very worthwhile. Not everyone who filed was actually at that info session, but of the people that were there, we definitely made an impact, and they-
And not everybody did.
Correct. So, I mean, I think the point was to give people a real good understanding of what it means to be on the board, if they make that decision to file. And I think we did our job by giving people the information that they maybe didn't have before, that helped them decide whether this was something they wanted to do or not. So I would recommend, going forward, that we continue to offer that in the, prior to the filing date, so that people have the opportunity to attend. The City PTA Luncheon, Betsy sent out a reminder, Ann Marie, if you haven't responded to Betsy, Ann Marie is more than happy to take your reservation for that tonight, if you know if you're able to attend. And I highlighted on the graduation assignments, after the printing of the last time, John and Linda flipped their assignments because of their availability, so I highlighted that on here. And if you haven't followed through, I know we were out of town, but if you haven't followed through with completing the summer retreat doodle poll, if you could try and do that in the next couple of days, so that we could narrow down some days and move forward with that. And I believe that's all I have. Have another board meeting before the next governance meeting, and what was discussed today, anything was discussed on the governance came up today. So we are now at other reports. Does anyone have anything else to offer? Oh, except that John's birthday was on Sunday, and it was well celebrated by those of us who were with him. Any other reports? Our next board meeting is April 22nd, and debriefing. John?
Madam President, this is only triggered by my notice of this-
Sudai?
Sudaien, is that how you say this?
Sudhayan.
I was at a restaurant not long ago and saw the Fargo North newspaper, which I didn't realize when I saw it, when I was grabbing, and I poured over it, of course, with my own interests in newspapering. So the only thing I'd take is, I'd like to see all of them. I'd like to see other schools newsletters, if they're inclined to pass them out to us as well. I would just sure love, as one board member, I'd sure like to see them and read them, without judging them, or studying them, or making them issues, but it's so insightful to see what kids say. So if we could see the North or Davies and other newsletters when it's, like, on occasion, when it's possible.
We can make that happen, I'll just let you know, the Davies one is an online, and they print very few copies, but we can have them print a few extra. So that's the approach they took, I'm not quite sure with North, but we'll do some checking.
Any other comments for debriefing? I just have one, thank you for being patient with us, with the Robert's Rules of Order sometimes. Ann Marie and I are not total experts yet, and sometimes you think you know what to do until something happens a little different than you were expecting. So I appreciate your patience, as we sort of muddle through some of that every once in a while. Anything else? Thank you. Meeting adjourned, 7:30.